Welcome, everyone. I call the March 19, 2025 Planning Commission meeting to order. The main purposes of tonight's meeting are to conduct study sessions on the sign code update and the Phase Two Development Code amendments. Before we move on to agenda items, I'd like to acknowledge our hybrid meeting format. The City of Bothell is providing the option to attend this meeting either in person or remotely via Zoom. Those who participate via Zoom, the chat question and question function is not available for use to ensure compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. We have a public comment agenda item at the beginning of the meeting. Please limit all comments to three minutes. Please note that the City of Bothell does not tolerate verbal harassment. Remember this during your comments. Public comment will be allowed both in person and via Zoom. Those wishing to comment via Zoom were asked to submit an online form by 3:00 P. M. today. People wishing to submit written comments were also requested to submit those comments by 3:00 P. M. Email was encouraged as well and will be acknowledged, and I don't believe we received anything. Those in attendance may also make comments and have been asked to indicate their desire to comment on the signup sheets at the entry. Imagine Bothell Notice, the city website, and tonight's agenda all provided information to the public for providing comments. The video of this meeting will be streamed live as well as recorded and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. Call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone and listen live to the meeting. For our phone-in callers, during staff presentation, the staff will make every effort to specify which materials they are referencing so that everyone can follow along. At this point, we will take a moment to acknowledge the attendance of the commissioners. Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Commissioner Westerback.
Here.
Commissioner Lever.
Here.
Commissioner Robson.
Here.
Commissioner Sills.
Here.
And Commissioner Augustinson.
Here.
All right. In addition, staff in attendance include Deputy Community Development Director Gates and planners Megan Riley and Jaclyn Simpson. Lastly, before we begin, I'd like to reiterate some meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. If you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off as there is a delay. At specific breaks in the presentation, I'll be calling on members who wish to speak or ask a question. If you want to speak, please indicate this by raising your hand, and I will call on you as I see you. This will help avoid the problem of having two people speaking at the same time. Identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, second a motion, or participate in debate. And I'll try to scan the screen to make sure I get the commissioners who are remote at this time. Please mute your microphone when not speaking. First item on the agenda is public comment. The city has accepted visitor comment in writing as well as accepted signup sheets for those who wish to speak at tonight's meeting. Those wishing to speak will have three minutes. As I indicated, there were no written comments received, so at this point, are there anyone in the audience interested in making a public comment? No. Seeing none, we will move on to our next agenda item. Anyone on Zoom? No. All right. No Zoom comments either. So our next item is the approval of the March 5th minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? Commissioner Robson.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Westerback, a second motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the March 5th meeting. Any discussion regarding those minutes? Looking around and seeing none, all in favor of approval of the March 5th minutes, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And I believe we got all ayes from our remote participants. The March 5th minutes are approved. That brings us to our next agenda item, the study sessions regarding the sign code. So we're going to do the sign code first? Okay. Study session regarding the sign code update. So we proceed. Introduce.
Hi. So I'm Megan. I've been here a few times now, so I know all of you. And so tonight, we are asking for you to consider and hold a vote on the proposed draft findings, conclusions, and recommendations for the Phase One Sign Code Amendment Update. And after we go to Planning Commission, we will be going to City Council as well in April. Okay. So just a few slides tonight, but first, the purpose of the sign code update, scope of changes, and then finally, we're asking for you to take action. So once again, there are two different phases of the sign code update. The first is legal compliance, ensuring that we are complying with Supreme Court rulings. And then the second phase is a broader modernization effort, which will be coming later this year in quarter three or quarter four. So we did have an additional update to the sign code. We realized that the downtown subarea regulations, Chapter 12.64, referenced Chapter 12.22. And so we updated that, you know, to comply with Supreme Court regulations also. So we specifically amended 12.64.601 and then 12.64.602. So this is the draft, Chapter 22 updates, which start on page eight in the agenda, and then the draft findings, conclusions, recommendations starts on page 49.
So I have a question. Should the word, I just want to go back. Should the word "commercial" still be there?
So these are the table of, these are the, these are referring to the sections that were there. So the titles have changed, but this is like referring to the original titles of the sections.
Okay. When I reviewed the packet, the word "commercial" was still in there.
The packet should, starting on page eight, should reference and should show that the 12.22.060, for example, should reflect permanent signs on premise, on premises. The dash "commercial" should be removed from that on the online, on the packet version online. So I'm not sure which one you're, yeah. I just opened it from, from the website, so it has been struck from, from those to reflect those sections further down as well.
Yeah. I pulled it off the city website, so. All right. Sorry.
But yeah, that's a great point. This is referring to the original section titles. Okay. So before we begin, do you have any questions, anything else that you would like to discuss?
Commissioners, any other questions? Looking Zoom participants, seeing none. Okay. Proceed.
This is the end of the presentation. So now we're asking for you to approve the proposed draft findings, conclusions, recommendations, either outright or with amendment, or deny them.
Commissioner Westerback.
Just clarification. This is basically all the content we covered last time. We discussed the sign, so it's nothing new. It's just the final version, it sounds like, with a few edits that weren't required. Okay.
Yes, there is this additional update. Like I said, you know, staff caught that this section was also referring to the sign code section, so we did update that, and that's new, but.
Otherwise.
Otherwise.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
So do you have the findings, conclusions, or recommendations? It was page 41 in the packet, if you need to find that. So again, this is the way the commission communicates with the council regarding issues that are before us. This one is pretty straightforward, so I don't know that we, well, I think we should walk through it anyway, but I think we can do it pretty quickly. The findings are pretty much all boilerplate facts that recount the history and the outreach that's been done. Conclusions, three conclusions, talk about how they've been drafted and reviewed by the public, that they're necessary to comply with recent court rulings, and that they're in the best interests of public health, safety, and welfare. And then the recommendation that the council adopt the amendments as proposed. Any comments on those findings, conclusions, and recommendations? Everyone a moment, if you wish. Commissioner Sills?
Yeah, I just have something really minor on page 50. The first reference to Imagine Bothell just needs an extra L at the end.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Okay. Other comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the findings, conclusions, and recommendations?
Commissioner Lever, motion to approve.
Okay, here's a motion to approve. Is there a second? Commissioner Sills?
Commissioner Sills, I second.
And it's been moved and seconded that we approve the findings, conclusions, and recommendations. Any discussion around those? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. It is unanimous. The findings, conclusions, and recommendations are approved as submitted with the single comment there, so thank you for your work on this.
Thank you so much.
And next up, we have a study session on the Phase Two Development Code amendments. Presented to us by Jaclyn Sampson, and proceed when you're ready.
Yeah. My name is Jaclyn Sampson. I'm coming back today to talk about the Phase Two Code Amendments. So no action required today. Staff is just looking at feedback from the Planning Commission on our different Phase Two Comprehensive Plan topics. That includes neighborhood scale commercial, floor area ratio, FAR, and lot coverage. We also have additional topics of parking, variance criteria, and the Comprehensive Plan Development Regulation Amendment process. So this is a quick agenda that we have today. First, we'll do some updates on the Phase Two overlaid zones, or sorry, updates on the Phase Two and talking about a little bit of our overlaid zone cleanup. And next, we'll be talking about the different topics that we have for Phase Two, neighborhood scale retail, floor area ratio, and lot coverage, as well as parking, the variance criteria, and the comprehensive plan and development regulation amendment process. So some updates to Phase Two. Just as a reminder, we're hoping to have a finalize and a final ordinance by July 2025. We've also have some additional code amendments since the February 19 meeting that we had. To update the variance standards, revise the Comprehensive Plan and Development Regulation process, and parking in regards to the Senate Bill 5184 that's currently at the House and has a meeting on this Friday. So we'll go more into detail on these different topics later in the presentation. So some updates to the overlaid zone. So the last meeting, I mentioned the overlaid zones where we were looking at how to clean up some zoning within our mixed-use overlays. And after looking at our land use maps, staff has decided that we will need additional time in order to clean that up past July 2025 timeline we have for Phase Two. On the screen, you can see this specifically in the sub, the subarea for North Creek. On the right, you can see in orange, those are the overlay zones, and on the left is the zoning within the area. So for example, if you look at MU E, there's four different combinations for zoning that's in that area, and so it makes things a little bit more difficult when we're trying to unravel how to fit everything within a singular overlay when there's so many different zoning combinations, and they're not all similar.
Yeah. So our plan was to continue on with this cleanup throughout the year, wrap it into our, our back half of the year, just general miscellaneous housekeeping code amendments, just so we don't miss anything with the high degree of complexity here. No policy changes, just we want to be able to show the work to make it clear. We went from, for example, the top line, RAC, OP, CBLI, E-MC. How do we get that to just an E-MC zone without missing anything? Allowed uses, any special standards that exist, and make sure we can make the code a lot more legible and usable.
And here's the map of North Creek Subarea. So again, you can see just how many different combinations there are. So this, the hope is to, again, simplify everything, but again, it's going to take further past the July 2025 timeline that we have. All right. And then now we're going into the different topics that we have. We'll be starting with neighborhood scale commercial. So the goal with our presentation tonight is just go over new information that we have on these different topics with Planning Commission and let you all know about staff's recommendation for moving forward and then getting some more direction from you all. That way, we can return in the next meeting with some drafted code language for you all to approve. At the end of each of the topics, I will have a list of questions, so that's when we can start doing some, you can provide some feedback on everything that we go over. So starting with neighborhood scale commercial. So all general, local, and state codes related to limitations or provisions on odor and noise will be required to obtain all necessary licensing from the city's state or health departments. And all finalized regulation will be placed within the Bothell Municipal Code 1206150. So we're looking at adding neighborhood scale commercial because the 2024 Comprehensive Plan update supports small-scale retail opportunities, and we're primarily using the Department of Commerce guidelines around neighborhood scale commercial to help guide us when looking at, when looking at the code. So now we're going to go into some of those staff recommendations that we have. This is a definition recommendation that we have. We used some different cities as examples, as well as our own goals that we have for neighborhood scale commercial. So to read, neighborhood scale commercial means small-scale retail service and office uses that primarily serve the daily needs of nearby residents by providing essential goods, professional and personal services, and neighboring gathering places. These establishments are designed to complement residential areas by promoting walkability, reducing the need for long-distance trips, and minimizing parking demand. Examples include corner stores, cafes, and other convenience-oriented businesses that enhance community interaction. Here is our intent recommendation. Again, this is based off of other cities, as well as what we wanted to see within the intent statement for the city. So neighborhood scale commercial is intended to promote neighborhoods' vitality and compatibility with surrounding residential areas. Only small-scale retail services and residential uses that primarily serve residents and minimize traffic from outside the neighborhood are allowed. These businesses should support live work opportunities, be easily accessible by walking, biking, and local transit, and contribute to the vibrant pedestrian family-friendly community hubs while reducing reliance on automobiles. This is our hours recommendation. These are based off of specifically the Aberdeen and Burian municipal codes, which state 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. for their hours of operation. We recommend that hours of operation, including deliveries, are allowed between 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. through Monday and Friday, and 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. Saturday through Sunday. We wanted to keep in mind that most residents like sleeping in on the weekends, and so this, the 7:00 a.m. shift is to accommodate for that. And here is for scaling. So staff looked at different examples to create a recommendation for how to scale commercial spaces for neighborhood scale commercial. The Department of Commerce guidelines highlighted two different ways that a city could scale commercial. So that includes having a hard maximum, so that's seen in Aberdeen and Burian. They, so for in Aberdeen, they limit commercial use to 2,000 square feet in residential low zones and 4,000 square feet in their residential high zones. While in Burian, it's just a flat 2,000 square feet throughout their residential zones. If you're looking at Spokane and Redmond, they actually use, they use, they look at scaling based off lot size. So for Spokane, they use 0.8 FAR as their maximum for commercial, for neighborhood retail zones. And for Redmond, they use a 0.3 FAR to a maximum of 3,500 square feet. And this is added on top of the residential use FAR, so the base floor area ratio can't exceed 0.6 FAR. So if the residence is, say, 0.4 FAR, then that means the commercial space can only go up to 0.2 FAR. So staff recommends using a percentage of a lot to regulate maximums by lot size. This is based kind of on the Redmond regulation, so we were looking at 30% of the lot size up to 3,500 square feet as the maximum. Permitted uses. We wanted to follow the Commerce Guidelines on allowed uses. Additionally, staff recommends that there will be no outdoor storage or storage of vehicles allowed on a neighborhood scale commercial. The permitted uses, they are highlighted within the packet, but they include for food and beverages, restaurants, coffee shops, bars, pubs, and taverns, retail sales, so that's like grocery or food markets, so like a traditional corner store, hardware stores, bikes, sporting goods, pharmacies, and services that can, that could include childcare centers, salons, and barbers, physicians, art galleries, and florist shops. So here are some questions that we have for the Planning Commission today. Does Planning Commission have any comments on the guidance and examples from Commerce or other jurisdictions or recommended language? Does the Planning Commission have any comments or feedback on the potential scale? And are there any, any additional use types to include?
So commissioners, comments? Commissioner Augustinson, then Lever.
Hello, Sarah Augustinson here. Thank you, Senior Planner Sampson. I would love to, for my memory to be refreshed, on any previous discussion we had about having neighborhood scale health care establishments such as pharmacies or places where people could get vaccines and pick up over-the-counter medications, maybe even small urgent care clinics. To me, it seems like they might not be included in the first phase, but curious to see if they might be included in a future vision.
We didn't look specifically on, so including the Commerce Guidelines is pharmacies, so that could be included within this. There wasn't any conversation specifically around that in the last meeting, but it is included within those Commerce Guidelines, so it can be something that is implemented.
Commissioner Lever, then Commissioner Westerback.
Commissioner Lever, so I, I have a question about, sort of the same about the type in terms of the, because these are examples, doesn't mean that it is, that's it, right? Whatever you have that is it, because for instance, for the retail, similar to the comment that we just heard, like really including like, or naming like the Pixar shops, and for services as a pedlover, like maybe pet care, or like dental or medical offices, do we need to be specific? Or the fact that we're providing examples by the time the, the permit comes through, I mean, request to, to use it, to use it, does that, does the examples help approve or deny, or does it have to be inclusive of all the things that we want to, we're going to allow?
I think, I think what we'd look to would be that intent statement first, as well as the sort of the such-as listings of allowed uses. So the intent section, the intent statement would help clarify, does a use that may not fit a specific mold or, or term that is typically used or is within, we can't have, you know, the law, the longest laundry list, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. If there's someone that's proposing a use that is not on the list specifically, you know, there's not a, it's not a cafe, it's not a corner grocery store, but it functions that same way and it meets the intent, then we would, we would say, yes, that, that is essentially operating as a neighborhood scale commercial business, and we would, we would be able to allow that. And we can grow what that list looks like, but then you sort of run into the issue of, well, if you've listed 50 things, is, at what point do you, do you stop that? So I think trying to lean in heavily on that intent statement and build from there when we're, when we're analyzing something that might be a little bit different than what we've seen, but as long as it fits with the scale and the hours of operation and that intent, then, then we'd, we'd say it is allowed. Does that, does that help answer that question?
Yes.
Commissioner Westerback.
Excuse me. Commissioner Westerback here. Thank you for the presentation. This is great. And the Commerce stuff's really thorough. Went through it all, and I've looked at it before. I think they did a really good first pass at giving us a template to work with, and I think it's a great way to start. It's pretty thorough, and they cover a lot of issues when you, when we look through their, their full guidance packet that, that may come up, and so it's really thoughtful. So I think it's a great place to start for us to, if we can begin this program, and then adjust as late, as, adjust as we go, like we do with most things, right? Tweak it as we go. I was really happy to see ACUs in there, the accessory commercial units, and I could see in the future, because our, we do, we do have, of course, shorter setbacks now in residential, thanks to our updated development code, but I could see folks wanting to do a zero lot line or maybe no more than five-foot setback on the front for some new ACUs if they were allowed to put one in the front yard or, or extend the house or something like that. So I could see that coming up in the future. Or maybe, I, this is probably allowed, you know, to do a deck or seating area, we're going to be allowed to do that in a yard anyway, but that's just kind of something that came to mind because some of the coolest ones we see out in the, out in the wild are, you know, right up, the old, old ones that came right up to the sidewalk. And I, I also realize just, planning-wise, you know, the majority of Bothell is not a grid like we have here in Lower Maywood, and I think a lot of these places where you see these thriving little stores from the days of yore, they're a grid and they're tighter, denser neighborhoods. So it's going to be a challenge, I think, to integrate these into a lot of the cul-de-sacs and the dendritic, you know, called, non-grid streets of Bothell. So I think that's going to be some growing pains, so some flexibility is going to be great there, because some are just not going to lend themselves to, to stores and shops as easily as others. The, the, I like the, the recommendation of the percentage of lot size. I think that's great. I mean, up to 3,500 square feet, I imagine the average house in Bothell isn't even 3,500 square feet, so that's pretty, that's pretty generous. That's great. And I realize, you know, if we had a 5,000-square-foot lot, which we probably don't have a whole lot of here, most of them are larger, you know, it's going to be a little smaller, but it's still going to be larger than most people would need. So I like that. That's great. And, and you listed all the options and then kind of came to that, like, oh, I think that works really well versus trying to do the FAR options. What was I going to say? The, they bring up the kind of the challenges with office, and maybe they should, maybe it should be on the second floor or limited on the ground floor. I would kind of say. I would kind of say like, it's, it's cool, it's cool, the idea of having your local professional who often is gonna work, you know, a home occupation office anyway. Maybe they would have, they'd be in that ACU or they'd be in a converted garage or something, you know, what IBM and Apple started in garages and stuff, right? But maybe the caveat would be they need to have some sort of storefront signage or a somewhat commercial element. To show that when you're walking down the street, oh, there's my neighborhood lawyer or accountant or architect or something like that. So. I don't have necessarily a solution for that, but it seems like we could be a little more flexible there. Because there could, it seemed like you're mostly gonna be people who just wanna work from home, but have a slightly more professional office front and center in that neighborhood. I think that's the bulk of the question. Mostly just comments, because I'm actually really, really happy with, with what we've got here and what was offered from commerce. And I think that is, my notes are all over the place, but I think those are the main comments I had. Yeah, thank you.
Commissioner Sills.
Thank you. I just had a clarifying question. Or is the FAR and the percent and the thirty-five hundred square feet, is that just for new development? Or would that pertain to like, if someone bought a house and wanted to operate the business out of that existing property, would it still be subject to those same?
It'd be, it'd be out of the, the, the existing structure. So if the, if there's room to, to add on to the, to the, to the building. Under the, the base code for the, for the residential portion of it, they could, they could do that. And this would just limit how much would be part of that commercial aspect.
Okay.
So giving them some flexibility with, you know, one, the, the, the new setbacks and, and lot coverage for the, the residential zoning. To, to potentially allow for an existing, you know, say smaller home to expand. And expand in a way that might actually work in someone's favor to say, well, then I'll use this portion of the house to be a commercial residential. So we'd be kind of looking at two different factors when we, we'd look at in addition for the structure and then what's the scale of the, the commercial aspect in a permit.
Other commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Looking ahead, I'm curious about how these regulations. And visions might intersect with the future tree canopy regulations. I'm guessing that any neighborhood business would fit within the same regulations that would apply to residences for trees. And I think that would be great. Just wanted to hear if there's any thought right now.
It, it didn't come up in, in how we were, we were analyzing this, but, you know, we, we, we didn't anticipate there'd be any, any changes in what could. Either be retrofitted with existing, you know, existing homes or expanded. They, they'd still be subject to current standards or, or new. And we'll, we'll see what comes out of the, the Urban Forestry Management Plan as far as canopy goals and, and, and those policies. But we're, we're hopeful with other things on the horizon that the alignment will work really well with some flexibilities on, on sites.
Thanks.
All right, looking around. I, I might suggest when you talk about benefits. You, you mentioned that it, it would lower the barrier for startup of small businesses. You know, if people could start in their own home, that would make it a little bit easier for people to get a start. So. All right. Not seeing any other comments here. You wanna move on to your next set?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll shift on to the next one. This is, this is great. So we'll, we'll take this feedback, put together draft code for consideration next time.
Okay, next we'll be talking about floor area ratio. So just as a reminder, FAR is a ratio of the total building floor area to the total lot area. It's a tool, a standard tool usually used by developers to figure out a site's buildable area. We are coming to planning commission today to continue the discussion prompted by the commission to look at the possibility of eliminating FAR from the municipal code. Having an FAR can help influence development of a variety of different building types, while removing FAR can give developers the opportunity to build up to the setback if they so wish to. So floor area ratio can be used to either limit the intensity of land use to lessen the environmental impacts of development or to control the mass and scale of a development. So removing FAR, developers would have the opportunity to build up the maximum height along to the established setbacks on the lot. FAR limits mean that building bulk and height are substitutes and the taller the building goes, then the narrower it becomes. With more perimeter open space on the site surrounding. So it's kind of important to understand this information. When thinking of if we want to remove FAR or not. So the following graphic kind of explains how the same FAR can look in different scenarios. So on the far left, you have, keeping in mind that these are probably built, or, these are keeping in, keeping in mind setbacks. On the far left, we have a building that's to the setback. While on the right, we have, as the building gets taller, it is having more open space within that law area. So here are some more FAR examples. We have the twenty-four hour fitness that's on one hundred and twentieth Avenue on the left. And on the right, we had the McMinns Anderson School, which is around the corner from City Hall. We're using these as examples because they are essentially the same FAR, give and take a little bit. Both about zero point three. And we are showing these examples as a way to show how the same FAR can produce a variety of different building types. So on the left, looking at twenty-four hour fitness, it's a two-story building. It has that larger parking lot area. While on the right, you have, the building is, has those four smaller buildings around that courtyard area. So kind of some different examples of FAR. And here are some more examples. These are located in Brooklyn, New York. All of these buildings have an FAR of three, but they're all very different. Clockwise from the top left, that building has six floors. On the right, that one has thirty-one floors. And then the bottom two have four floors. But they all have the same FAR. Again, the bottom two, they're, looking from the pictures, they're probably built to the setback, if not close. So a larger area for, let's say, those residential spaces, like they're probably apartments in those pictures. While on the top two, those have way more open spaces, but they're taller. And so. But again, all these have different, or sorry, they all have the same FAR. So FAR next steps. So removing the current maximum floor area requires. If we were to remove the FAR, we would need to look at, at the comprehensive plan update, especially for land use, housing, transportation, and capital facilities. As well as the EIS would need to be updated to assess how increased residential and commercial development would affect the city. And updating the FEIS from December twenty twenty-four. So right now, the city's policies and zoning rules are based on the existing FAR limits. If we were to increase capacity and remove that FAR, we would need to adjust our plans for housing, transportation, specifically road capacity. And infrastructure priorities. So our recommendation, if we did want to remove FAR from our regulations. Would to not exactly pursue it right now, but have it as a future work plan where all necessary updates, including the comprehensive plan. The EIS and any development regulations can be fully considered. And this would ensure a thorough evaluation of how the added capacity would impact the city as a whole.
And we did, we did add a couple of examples in the packet that identified. Some of those, you know, the twenty-four hour fitness and some of the other buildings within, within the city, some that do have an FAR maximum, some that do not. And identified what the, the capacity FAR currently is and how their, most are built well below what that capacity is. So it, it hasn't been, it hasn't been a ceiling that has been pursued and hasn't become an issue. Based on those, those maximums, which is why we're, we're sort of, what, why our recommendation is to, okay, we can study this further in the future. Right now, it would, it would take a, a pretty heavy lift to consider what the, you know. Adding thirty to, to fifty percent or, or more of, of the FAR capacity in structures. Especially with, with one of the, the later subjects tonight on parking. If that were to go away, we, we don't count parking in, in the FAR calculation. We just look at the gross floor area for the uses. So as an example, block D, I think it's about six stories, the lower two behind the retail, they are parking. So those, those don't count towards the FAR. So just wanted to make sure we touched on that.
Commissioner Lever?
Thank you. Yes, thank you. When, can you tell me more what it means to potentially implement a content, context-specific minimum FAR? When I was reading the packet, I wanted to really wrap my head around like what the options might seem based on the examples that you provided. Does, is that even a possibility or do we have to be very specific on eliminating and or? Anyway, is there such a thing as a context-specific minimum FAR or that's not even a thing?
I'm not quite sure exactly where in the packet that, that was included. The, the, the thought was that.
No, it's not included. It's me asking if, if this is a planning terminology. Or because when I was researching the F, F, SAR is something that I'm not, that's not something that I'm probably familiar with. So as I was reading through other best practices, the term of like context, context-specific minimum FAR. Was the potential like option so that the FAR setup would depend on the type of use and then particularly looking at FARs that are in transit-oriented zones. Like where we're looking at increasing the density in certain areas and kind of by leaving it open, but being, making sure that it is specified, that it is depending on the context of the FAR. But that might not be, that might just be, might not really know whether or not that's something that can be implemented. But it's not so specific, but it really allows the city to look at FARs on a, kind of like, case by case basis.
Yeah, I, I, I think within some of the, the sub areas downtown or Canyon Park, there are requirements for portions to be more, more so for downtown. Retail centric. It's, it's a great question to kind, to, to consider how, what type of gross floor area are we talking about? And how do, how does it guide? How is it, how is it guided by the code to develop what we wanna see on a site? When we're talking about the uses within certain, certain areas. That's definitely something that a future study to, to evaluate. How we could be more specific if we aren't already in the details of the, of the code for specific uses. But it wasn't part of what we were, we were considering. We were just, at this point, we were looking at elimination of a maximum. And eliminating that as a, as a factor in someone's calculus for development potential.
Commissioner Jones?
Thanks so much. You said that, I think, I think this is what you said. You said that most developers are not building up to the maximum FAR. And I apologize if I heard that wrong, but I think that's what I heard. I was wondering if there's a reason why they're not. So something else within the code that would never, that basically would, is a barrier to them building up to the maximum FAR. I'm just curious. I have no idea.
That's a great question. And, and it could be, I, I, I hypothesize it could be parking. Parking could be limiting in how much square footage a, a site could develop. Parking in the form of, as a, you know, the twenty-four hour fitness, for example, it's, it's a building and then parking all around it. Did they maximize how much building to parking they could without doing a, a park, a struck, structured parking? As that is definitely a, a, a cost to, to consider. So we may see with future parking work. Additional FAR growth. But I think in the, the, the couple of examples, there were significant, you know. Doubling or tripling of how much square footage there is that could be added to a site. With the current FARs that we just increased in December.
Yeah, thank, thank you for that. This is self commissioner Jones. Thank you for that. That's kind of what I was suspecting. But there's probably, I mean, I know we haven't analyzed it carefully, but that there's probably something else that a developer is considering, which is why they're not getting up to that maximum. And I guess, I, I mean, I don't have a particular recommendation other than, I think what we're trying to do here is reduce the number of barriers to. Maximize the amount of, of housing that's available, which will ideally lead to lower prices and things like that. But also within the scale and, you know, aesthetics of what we want for the city. And so I would just encourage our staff to try to reduce to whatever is the bare minimum. That still meets the goals of the city in terms of aesthetics, et cetera, but not add-on additional barriers. So if we don't need the FAR because there's something else that's there, then that's great. But if we're anticipating that, say, the parking regulations are gonna go away because of a state law, then maybe we do need the FAR. I mean, I guess that's what I'm trying to get at. And I know it's, I'm, maybe there are too many variables here. But I think that's probably what we're trying to get to.
Commissioner West.
Done and no response. So Commissioner Westback. This, this is a little, a little bit of a, a extension of what Commissioner Jones was talking about. But I realize in part, I'll, I'll, I'll own up, this is partly because of a question I, I had about FAR. Because I'd seen in other jurisdictions where they had, had setbacks in height and FAR, and I always thought it was redundant. I actually don't really have a problem with FAR. It was just when it's coupled with other bulk and height regulations. And so I dove into our code a bit, as I do, and it's pretty clean. We use this in mostly commercial and some mixed-use areas and stuff. I'm gonna tell, tell you things you guys already know, but just for context. And what we have in twelve fourteen point oh four oh, for example, for, for North Creek and Canyon Park and everything, it's pretty simple. We basically say you can go up to a certain height. There's no setbacks except what's required for landscaping. Now that, that's an area where I feel like that's a little bit of an old suburban thing. I kind of wonder if we should be in the future, not, maybe not right now, saying, do we, do we still need these big landscape buffers anymore? Is it, is it so awful to have a building without landscape? And then I really like what we do downtown. So I'm saying like, the FAR seems to work just fine. But with these, with tweaks, downtown, we have like a minimum height in, in most of the zones. And then, you know, two, two stories or whatever. And then we require parking to be. Around the back or in a garage or kind of tucked away. And so I, I kind of wonder, as new buildings are remodeled or built up in these business parks. When it was pretty much just parking lots and tilt-up concrete buildings and stuff, do we want to start pivoting our, our ship and saying? Maybe things should be at least two or three stories, wherever we decide, and as we tweak this code in the future, still using FAR. And maybe relax the landscaping requirements, but say, you know, you're, you're, we have, the buildings have to hold the corner, for example, downtown. Or they can't be more than five or 10 feet off the main street, whatever. Now, I, I realize some of the, 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 the big arterials and stuff down in Canyon Park and North Creek aren't necessarily real pretty. And you don't necessarily want to hear the cars zooming by. But instead of having like rows and rows and rows of cars in the building in the back, which is very suburban, if we start to, to move the building forward and say, you know, it needs to be. there really shouldn't be any parking in front of the building. And so we start to have a more of a, an urban uh, landscape where the buildings are close to the street. And then you can use that landscape, whatever, for for sound buffers. And you can require street trees and things like that, like a typical boulevard. So he starts to start to make it a much more appealing office park. So again, that kind of gets away from F A R, but it's um, it's just, can we can we use it to our advantage to say, you know, the building should hold the street, they should hold the corner. And then you use your F A R, but the parking would go behind if there's going to be parking or or to the side or something like that. So mostly it's just a tweak of F A R that I'm I'm looking for. And I concur with with Commissioner Jones that I'm really just looking for streamlining and simplification. And again, twelve point one four point oh four is is pretty clean. It's not, it's not overly complex. It's actually less complex than most of our residential codes because there's a lot of leeway in that. So I can't really complain about that too much. So so your ultimate recommendation, I don't really have a problem with. Because again, I I know I was the one who brought this to the fore. Uh, so I just wanted to say that. And it doesn't look like we have a lot of redundancy, the way we use F A R. I had worked in some other jurisdictions where they did layer one on top of the other. And so I was thinking about that, but it looks like we don't really have that problem here. Thanks.
Other commissioners? I I'm inclined to like F A R rather than other prescriptive ways of affecting um, design. It it lets lets them make adjustments. You know, you might have a skinny tall one with space around it. You might have a squat one that takes up more of the space that's lower. So I I I always think having that flexibility there is a good thing when we're asking designers to design a building. So so that's kind of my gut reaction, not based on a lot of analysis, but just the way it feels to me. You also had the question about minimum F A R. And um, I do recall talking about that in Canyon Park. And I I think that has its place, having a minimum, to be sure that the, you know, we're we're counting on specifically Canyon Park to meet some uh, goals for employment. And we only get there by using the land and not not underutilizing it. Commissioner Westerback.
I'm sorry to chime in again. I was gonna maybe take a guess at why, like Fred Meyer and some of these others didn't develop fully. I think they basically had their model. They they say, you know, we've got our parking, we've got our building, our standard building, we're done. We don't need to go three stories. And the model works and or Walmart, you know, they were expected of a fifteen year life or twenty year life or something like that. So it met their model. And I imagine um, some of the office parks back built back in the eighties and nineties were this were the same. If I could, if I could get inside their heads, they they built what they needed and nothing more. The land was relatively more affordable then. They had a lot of it. And um, you know, now we're kind of much later, thirty, forty years later, deciding like, can we get more out of this? That's close, you know, to reduce traffic, vehicle miles traveled and precious land and everything went up in cost. So that's just me extrapolating from what I've what I've seen in the development world.
Anything else on this one? See, you got some conversation and some impressions. Does that work for you tonight?
No, it's helpful for sure. Um, okay, so now I'll be talking about lot coverage. So the um, lot coverage is a portion of a property that's covered by buildings, structures and impervious surfaces such as driveways, patios or parking areas. Um, city council wanted community development staff to review the possibility of removing lot coverage from the Bothell Municipal Code and only using stormwater regulations to regulate lot coverage. I mentioned this in the last meeting, but if we were to use stormwater regulations, which does not impose any impervious surface maximums, then development could reach a hundred percent impervious surface, assuming that all impacts are mitigated. Um, so here is our recommendation. Um, staff recommends delaying discussions about removing lot coverage regulations from the Bothell Municipal Code until after the city finalizes updates to the parking regulations and the Urban Forestry Management Plan or U F M P. These projects impact tree canopy and urban forestry goals. So it's unclear whether lot coverage regulations should be kept or removed at this time based off those goals. Staff suggests revisiting this topic in a future work plan once these plans are completed. The city recently updated development regulations to allow more building and hard surface um, coverage. That was effective on January first. So far, there is no signs that these limits need further changes. But staff recognized that having two separate lot coverage calculations, so building coverage and hard ser- surface coverage is can make things more complicated. So we do recommend removing the maximum building coverage and relying only on a single hard surface coverage limit, making the rules simpler and more flexible. But no changes are proposed to the current maximum hard surface coverage in the Bothell Municipal Code. So here are some questions that we have. Um, based on staff recommendation, should we pause on discussions on eliminating the lot coverage standard in the Bothell Municipal Code until after the urban's urban forestry management plan and parking standards are finalized? And lastly, should staff move forward with the consult consolidation of how lot coverage is calculated and simplify the code to only review the maximum hard surface coverage?
Commissioners, Commissioner Westerback.
If you don't mind, I'll start again because I believe, again, I I threw this question out there. Maybe put it in the bug, a bug in the ear of the council. I love this. The um, the reason I ask is, I've been doing these coverage, lot coverage and structural coverage calculations, pervious and and structural for twenty five years. And and I'm like, why are we doing structural when we do impervious? It did seem seems superfluous. And I know there are probably reasons for it. And first of all, I love the way we did with the development regulations and what staff brought us and the increase. It's it's fabulous. And most people aren't even going to use the maximum. So it's really not a problem. I also recognize, so I had a really long conversation with my civil engineer because I talk to him all the time. And I just wanted to say, am I crazy for even thinking this is an idea? And he said, no, no, stormwater code is really strict. So so um, you know, it doesn't let it get with away with a lot. And if you did decide, and I and I I'm not necessarily proposing it now, but if you did get away from uh, maximum impervious or something like that. You're, as I said originally, you're going to be constrained. If you try and do ninety percent or a hundred percent or something like that, you're going to end up with some very expensive stormwater mitigation that most people are not going to want to pay for. So you're you're going to go to a rain garden or something like that that's going to be more affordable. So it's sort of self limiting. But I love the idea of getting rid of the structural coverage because once you've got pervious, you're going to include the building anyway. And I also like the idea of uh, for for a person doing a remodel or or a project that may not require a civil engineer, may be able to use a um, a a standard city detail, uh, which I've done on some projects without civil engineer. It's nice to know that, okay, we can go to thirty five percent, fifty percent, sixty percent, whatever. Impervious and I can use this, uh, you know, dry well detail or something like that to deal with my stormwater. And I don't require a civil engineer and it keeps our costs down. So it's really friendly. My uh, only caveat here was maybe like when we do have um, projects that can do more or can eliminate parking with a traffic management plan or something like that, or parking. Or we do, will we allow things where you can do a study and and reduce or increase something? Maybe there's the option for the person who does say, I'd really like to go up to eighty and only sixty fives allowed. Can I do a a professional civil engineered plan that shows how I can mitigate the stormwater effects? And that's an option if they want to pay pay that money and do that report. And that, again, wouldn't probably be the average person, but they might want to spend that money to do that. So that would be my only caveat, like maybe we have that that relief valve for people who want to do that. If they can show that they can mitigate the stormwater. Otherwise, I love the idea of uh, of eliminating structural and just working with impervious only. That was kind of one of my major, you know, major concerns because stormwater has become the the governing factor in so many projects. So, thank you.
Other commissioner questions? Commissioner Robson?
This isn't so much a question, it's just my input, um, that I think that both of the uh, I would approve both of these things um, to uh, consolidation of how lot coverage is calculated and simplifying code. Um, I think simplifying code is always good. And I also think we need to put a pause on um, eliminating lot coverage standards um, till urban forestry. And we have the those kinds of um, bases um, in place before we start making changes that are going to be impacted by um, other plans that we have. So that's my input.
Other comments? Question, do you have a sense on the timing of the forestry management plan and the parking standard finalization?
Yeah, I was just going to say that. So the the ma- urban forestry management plan, right now, we are in the the gathering stages of data for um, all of our street tree inventory, parks and parks tree inventory. Cameron will be coming back with with updates in either April or May. With that, with that information. And we'll be working through through that and the tree, the overall tree canopy data through the summer. So we're looking at probably end of this year where we can start to really get into the conversations around what do we have, what are our goals, uh, and how can we develop policies within that that U F M P? Uh, and then how does that educate the the tree retention replanting uh, standards for for the city? So, you know, I I think we'd be looking at, you know, taking taking a pause on this, identifying it as likely a a resolution for council to to consider to pick this back up upon completion of the urban forestry management plan. I I think we'll be done with parking well before that. Um, and I'll get into that in the next, the next topic uh, as far as where where we are, where the state is on it. So within the next six to twelve months, we should be back talking about lot coverage and how it relates to to trees.
Thank you. And based on that, I would wholeheartedly agree with Commissioner Robson that uh, yes, we should pause. Those two other elements are really important as we consider this. And anytime you can simplify, it's a good thing. So I think that's the feedback you got from the commission.
Great.
I would just chime in and say I have no problem with that either. I I didn't get to that. But yeah, waiting for us to to look at the urban forestry management and everything makes to perfect sense, of course.
Okay, so moving on, we we referenced or we use the analogy of this as a cart and we might throw a few things into the cart as we go along. The three things that we are, we placed within here are parking, uh, evaluation of our variance criteria and consideration of uh, amendments to our our docketing process, our private amendment request process. Parking that everyone wants to hear about, I know. We have been tracking closely Senate Bill fifty one eighty four. This has significant reductions to the parking standards. Uh, as Jaclyn mentioned, it has passed the Senate, it is in the House. There's a hearing on it or a vote on it this Friday, I believe. I'm not sure what will, when we'll know what's going on. But what we did uh, to set ourselves up well, not have the sort of the back and forth issues of middle housing in twenty three, twenty four, uh, was to say, here's a draft code, that's what's in the packet that reflects everything within the current version of that that state bill. Should that bill go forward as is, we're set up to move forward with that, provided everything doesn't change. And we could be implementing something within a couple of months, well ahead of what the likely deadline would be. We can also have the conversations around additional reductions and and work through that. So kind of the highlights, it it consolidates all commercial parking into one broad category and assigns one space per thousand square feet. That changes, you know, many, many uses in there are one per three hundred, one per two fifty. Commercial just just pulls in, is it, is it an office, is it retail, is it a restaurant? It then sets a a base standard for residential at point five stalls per per residential unit. So it doesn't matter what size it is, studio, one bedroom, three bedroom. It's all point five, uh, basically saying, we'll let the market decide on what what the parking will be. No guest parking stall requirements. Uh, and then there's a series of exemptions. Uh, those exemptions run through um, no parking required for affordable housing, for senior housing, housing for uh, individuals with disabilities. If a if a restaurant or commercial space serves alcohol, there's no required parking. Okay? And there's a, there's a few others um, in there as well that we highlighted. So we struck through um, some significant sections of twelve point sixteen, primarily those those uh, flexibilities we built in with middle housing. So we we reduced it down, I think, to point seven five and um, and if you're within certain distance of of transit, those all go away. The table for how to calculate parking shrunk down significantly. We kept those uses uh, like um, government, uh, some of those outer outlining uh, standards, outlining uses uh, as they are. So definitely interested in any comments tonight on those. Uh, and then we just made sure that we aligned with the downtown standards uh, and Canyon Park. So Canyon Park's twelve point four eight, downtown has uh, some other standards, twelve point six four. Just making sure that we were aligning with those. So that draft code that was in the packet is what we could move forward with. We could look to uh, reduce further, modify based on what that Senate bill is with your input tonight. Come back in the future. We'll take this to city council and either know what what the outcome is or not, um, what the outcome and your input will be from tonight uh, in the middle of April, beginning of, middle of April, I think, with with city council. So I'm going to pause here. Um, I just have, I have these three slides to run through. I just want to see if there's any any initial feedback, input, questions, changes that you'd like to to see made that I guess either go beyond. If if this becomes state law, then this is what we would at least have to do. Would you want to go further? Um, so we can, we can prep for that.
Commissioners, questions, comments? Commissioner Sills?
Yeah, I love the proactivity. I think it does seem to be pretty likely that it will become, but not to jinx it. But, you know, it just sounds like there's a lot of positivity around doing this. I would say, you know, maybe I like aligning to it and just kind of seeing what happens, see what that does. Like we've talked about before, what sort of the effect is. And then we can always reevaluate at a later time. Because I think, I think this is on a good path. Um, and I think it's, it's worth seeing how that works out.
Commissioner Westerback?
Commissioner Westerback, so full disclosure, I have testified on Zoom in in support of this bill in both the Senate and the House. So I like it. Everybody knows parking is one of my pet projects. I I agree with Commissioner Sills. This is an excellent start. Kind of like when we talked about the the commerce ideas for the Abraham Head commercial earlier. This this bill is a great starting point. Um, it's a sea change even for us. Of course, I'd like to see no requirements at all. I won't, I won't advocate for that right now. But I will say this is a great start and covers a lot of the really problematic things that we're seeing, holding back small businesses, um, housing, um, you know, the cost of construction and sprawl. It just really addresses a lot of things. So Senator Bateman's got a a great bill here. So I'd support it. And yeah, it's a, I'm, I love the proactivity as well that you guys look, well, you guys already started looking at the code and seeing what it would apply. It's great. It's wonderful. And you're right, it does have a a good. Who knows? We'll see. Anything can happen when, before it gets to the governor's desk if it if it makes it there. But um, anyway, yeah, I applaud this. It's great. And I hope it happens. I think it'll make a real difference for uh, for Bothell. And um, as I always say, I mean, um, being in this this building development world, the market and and the people building the buildings are not fools and they have a lot of money on the line. So if they feel a project needs a certain amount of parking, they should be allowed to put that in. And it may be half of what we originally would have told them. And we see how many parking lots are half empty all the time or three quarters empty. So getting to the this eight, this time now in twenty twenty five, we're starting to question like, did we really need three hundred spots when really no one uses more than fifty each day? It's really great. So this this is a great beginning on that. Thanks. It's really great. So this, this is a great beginning on that. Thanks.
Other commissioners? Commissioner Gustafson?
Hi, Sarah Gustafson here. Also excited, oh, sorry. I was wondering if um, during our conversation, Deputy Director Geitz, we might take a look at twelve sixteen on page ninety five of our packet which deals with the bike parking. It looks like there's some really good things there and I would love to take a look at some of the regulations here and learn more about them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that and, and, and come back next time. And, and I, I guess I should, I should mention the, the, now that you mentioned bike parking, the, the electric vehicle requirements or ADA requirements, those, those were unchanged as far as percentages. So um, I know some jurisdictions have an EV charging station required, you know, so many per um, depending on how many, how many standard stalls exist. Um, and that always, that always applies to ADA stalls. So those did not change with, within the bill. Um, they're just relative to the total number.
Commissioner Lever?
Yeah, I just have a question. I think the last couple of times when we talk about parking, the um, topic of parking management strategies has come up. Is that something that needs to be covered now? And if so, why is that in here? And it's not or the parking management strategy is gonna be sort of like addressed at a later time, correct?
Yeah, parking management is definitely one of those, one of those topics that we are, we are moving into. Uh, city council discussed it a little bit last night with the downtown sub area plan update uh, presentation and, and, and conversation that went along. So it, 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 it goes hand in hand with parking updates. It goes hand in hand with downtown particularly. Um, and how, how we, we identify where, where there are parking, where, where public parking does exist, uh, how to, how, how to get in and around and um, in any transportation mode, whether it's bus, bike, ped or vehicle. Um, and how to, that's, that's, that's our, our, our long-term goal within the downtown to, to be able to, to provide that information. And parking management is, is one of those. Um, but we need to look at it holistically as well as within, within the downtown, how to, how to approach. And it, and it does cover multiple departments. So it's, it's not just community development. It's public works, it's police. Uh, how do we wanna, how do we wanna go about uh, working through that? That issue.
Other commissioner comments? Just a question, something struck my eye uh, in the table near the end, one oh three, talks about cash and lieu. How does that work on parking? It's not a change. It's been.
It's within, it's, that's in the, the downtown regulations. There are some fee and lieu opportunities. Uh, and it could be for, I'd have to look, I'd have to look further into that. Um, I can, I can get back to you offline. Um, about the, the, that existing code. That isn't, it's not one of the changes. No. Okay, okay.
They, they just looped out. I mean, that's one of my pet interests. That's how we deal with cash and lieu. And it's, it's in table twelve sixty four, four oh two.
Okay.
In, in a number of places. I just wondered, is it something that's utilized? If so, how is it done? Just.
I'd, I'd have to look into it. Yeah, yeah.
I will, I will comment on that briefly. It's very vague, but I talked with a previous planner, gosh, about fee and lieu years ago, pre-pandemic, two thousand seventeen, sixteen, something like that. No one had ever done it at the time and taken advantage of it. So they didn't really have a program in place or a price. The closest we ever got, and I talked to him three, four different times about it, kind of trying to poke like, how much would it be? How much would it be? How much would it be? Cause there were actually prices laid out, like I think in Kirkland jurisdiction you were once with, they actually had a price per spot, if I recall, they used to. Am I wrong on that? I think Bellevue and Kirkland did maybe.
There, there was, there was a essentially a parking district. It was very, very old from late eighties, early nineties.
Yeah, it was, it was really low. It was like ten thousand dollars or something like that. And so the planner at the time told me it would probably be closer to what a structured spot would cost now. It'd be like, more like fifty thousand dollars or something like that. So that was the, that was kind of where we left the conversation. So that's why I say it's vague, cause they didn't really have a number, but it was very high in the past. So I don't know if that would stick around or not.
And, and you've hit on a, a, a topic that as part of the downtown plan, the, the fallout will be with parking changes with uh, parking management study and then the code updates, that may morph, be modified, go away. Um, as we work through, through those over the next year or two.
Thanks. Yeah. Yeah, I thought it wasn't changed, but I wondered. I'd never heard discussion of it. So I guess there's a reason. All right, thank you. Any other comments on this issue? Seeing none from the commissioners, anything else you'd like to share with us?
On parking, no. Um, two more, two more quick slides. Uh, the other two items added to this phase two cart. Uh, variance criteria, there's no recommendation for, for any of these three. Obviously, we're just touching the, scratching the surface here. Um, staff wanted to explore how we, how we're set up with variances. Uh, it's a very high bar right now. We receive very few applications. Um, we, we wanted to look at potential uh, adjustments that reflect best practices, uh, evaluate what our peer communities do, uh, our surrounding communities. Um, and, and explore what, what we could do. A variance uh, to, to back up is sort of the last resort when some development regulation cannot be met. Our code is set up really well already with the, the base standards. And then we have some baked in deviations, modifications, or sometimes called flexibilities that are either within the code or within our public work standards, our fire department standards. If you do this, then you are allowed to do that. Um, for example, if you need to reduce an easement setback from a water main, you need to show that it's uh, can still be accessed for service with clearance overhead, um, accessibility for vehicles to, to, to come in and, and do that work. Um, and there are a number of those already. So we already have built into the code several administrative. We do these through the development permit review process, deviations and exceptions, which may be why we don't see many variances. Um, but we see, we, we do think it may be the time to just explore this as part of our administrative uh, updates that we wanted to get at this year and evaluate what other communities do, be a little bit more streamlined with, with how these operate. Uh, consider how they are reviewed. Do they need to go to the hearing examiner? Do we need to be more explicit in what cannot be varied? Some jurisdictions do identify, you cannot vary. Um, there, there's, there's no variance opportunity for X, Y, or Z. Um, and anything else could, but you have to achieve a certain bar. So we were, we were looking to just get any sort of initial um, nods here, just to, to kind of explore that and come back with, here's a series of jurisdictions, here's what our code currently says, here's what it could shift to, uh, to make it a little bit more clear. Um, again, we don't know if this would even be needed, given the recent adjustments to the code for setbacks in height and, and, and lot coverage and, and parking potentially now. Um, so just wanted to get any, any initial feedback on, on variance standards here.
Well, I finished the comp plan and you got some time to kill. Any comments? Me facetious, of course. Any comments uh, from commissioners on this? I, I think studying it's always a good idea. You know, if you can fit it in your workload, uh, I think it's a good thing. Okay.
Agreed. Commissioner Westback here. I avoid them like the plague because they're so difficult, but uh, evaluating whether we're, we're in line with um, best practices, I think is a great idea.
Sounds good. Uh, and then the, the last thing I've got uh, involve the, the, the private docket requests. Um, part of the complexity here is, is how we, we had a singular map that was land use designation and zoning uh, zoning code, uh, which is usually where the start of an amendment request begins. Uh, the state does require we have a private amendment request option uh, to be reviewed no more than annually. Um, what we are looking to do is again, provide clarity for applicants to the community, the planning commission, city council. Um, and look to make a few, a few minor tweaks within, within these, these standards, uh, identify what criteria should be included with, with an application. Um, it's, there's not much there within the code at this point. It's, we kind of get what we get when we, we'll receive an, an, an amendment request. We'd like to be a little bit more clear. Um, and hope to, to set the expectations upfront um, for, for what is, what is required and, and sort of that, that decoupling of is this a comprehensive plan, land use designation amendment, or is this a zoning amendment? With the, the approach of changing so much of our residential land use designation in the comprehensive map and the, the future land use map to medium density residential. Those have the opportunity to shift in their zoning without needing a comprehensive plan amendment. So we may start to see more of those over time as they might be on the border of a, from one zone to another. Um, because as we've said before, we didn't go through and surgically um, look to every nook and cranny within the city. Um, when we did the broad brush stroke approach to our future land use map. So again, we're, we're just looking for that nod of, you know, come back with, with some potential amendments. Um, we want to make sure that it's very clear for any applicant, uh, when we bring it to uh, through the process to city council. They know what they're seeing. They, they give us the, the go ahead to bring it to planning commission to study um, and come back for a resolution to, to continue on. So same as, same as the last time.
I think it's an excellent goal. Uh, any comments from commissioners? Notting heads, thumbs up. Proceed.
Great. That's, that's all from us. So we appreciate the, the input. We'll be back with some draft codes for neighborhood scale retail. Um, we'll bring back that lot coverage code amendment to remove um, what it would look like to remove the building coverage and just go with a maximum coverage. Um, we'll continue, continue to keep an eye on parking and where that goes. Um, and then we'll, we'll touch in on the, the variance criteria and the docket amendment process. So appreciate it.
All right, thank you. And thanks to both staff presenters for very clear and comprehensive presentations. We, we appreciate your work. Thank you. Reports from members, anything to share with the group? Commissioner Sills?
Yeah, I have kind of a random one, but um, as someone who walks slowly around the neighborhood with a very small person, I've come to notice a fair amount of derelict vehicles on private property, so not, you know, on the public street or anything. And it just made me wonder, you know, what are the resources out there to help people get rid of vehicles that are no longer operational? I know there's usually a cost with that. I, you know, did some late research. It looks like Snohomish County has a lot of information on it, but just thinking about, you know, are there ways we can share information or look at some way to address that? Because I don't know how widespread it is. As I said, it's just sort of what I've observed on my own. Um, but just thinking about how we might help people with that. Um, especially if they are on fixed incomes or something like that. And just aesthetically, it would be better for the neighborhood. It's better for property values. It's better for the look and feel of the community. So throwing that out there and open to other, what others know.
Staff, can we in briefly here? So there, there's always the, there's, there's a couple paths. There's the, the code compliance path, which, which within that we do tend to reach it. We, we tend to work with those, those vehicle owners to try to find ways to remove them. There's, there's ways to donate them. I mean, everyone hears those, those, those ads to donate it to whatever. And they'll come and pick it up in almost any condition. Um, there are ways to, to designate it as a, as a junk vehicle. There's a couple of steps to do and that can be then can help um, move it along um, through that process. And it's a little different for King County versus Snohomish County, depending on, um, on how that works. Um, we, we're a very, we're reactionary when it comes to code compliance. Um, so we don't go out looking for them. Um, but we, we do tend to take the approach of, let's see how we can help. Um, and just uh, sort of knock, knock and talk uh, with anyone.
Yeah, and I'm not suggesting going after them, but really more, is there an information opportunity here to um, just make sure people are aware that we can help sort of thing, rather than any punitive step. Um, but thank you. That's helpful.
Well, speaking from my past life, and it's been a number of years now since I've left the business, but uh, King County's, all of the city of Bothell is within the King County Solid Waste Division's service area. King County Solid Waste does have, you can't get rid of a vehicle unless you have a title, unless it's been designated as a junk vehicle. And King County Solid Waste Division did have an individual who I'm sure is retired by now. I hope she has. Um, who would go at no cost to, and what typically happens, people buy a property, they clear the blackberries and the junk vehicle there. You can't get rid of it. You can get a junk vehicle certificate issued at no charge through the solid waste division. And I don't think that's changed in the years since I left. So that's a, a path. Anything else for the group? Commissioner Lever?
Thank you. So I just want to acknowledge the city and thank you for having so many women in the planning commission. So it is Women's History Month. And as we know, I work in King County. So I wanna let everyone know that council members, Claudia Valducci, Teresa Mosquera, Sarah Perry, and the program are hosting a panel next, I think it's the twenty fifth, March twenty fifth, in Chinook, which is right downtown to celebrate women. And again, I am so proud of us. Look at all these women in the room. Love it. So happy Women's History Month.
Thank you for sharing that with us. Other, uh, other commissioners? Seeing none, any updates from staff?
Uh, no updates other than our, our regularly scheduled meeting for the, the first week of April is, is scheduled. Uh, items might, might change, but uh, we'll look to see you back here then.
All right.
I, I did tell you a couple of weeks ago, but I probably missed that meeting. So I will get formal notice. So I can go meet up with other developers. So maybe I'll bring some information back. We'll see.
We're looking for it in the reports from members on the uh, April fifteenth meeting. Uh, seeing there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Sills?
I move to adjourn.
Your second. Commissioner Gustafson?
Second, and thank you.
All right, all in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, all right, thank you all. This meeting is adjourned at seven thirty PM. As indicated, our next meeting will be April second. We'll forward to seeing you all then. Good night.